Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By roll call, see that all council members are present. We'd like to thank those of you who are with us tonight in the audience, as well as those who may be watching at home on City 56 or some other device. So we'd like to begin this evening with an invocation. We've asked Councilmember Kelly if it'd lead us an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Alsop. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our Father in heaven, dear Lord, I do thank you for this very privilege again that we have to come as a group and represent the citizens of Cholo. That you give us wisdom and we make good decisions that are proper for the city. Most of all, my thought tonight turns for what might be considered selfishness. We know that you know our needs before we ask, but it's appropriate. The Scripture says, "Ask." I ask for moisture. You know, we need it. We need it bad. With that, I would say, please bless our service personnel, home and abroad. Guide and direct them and their leaders. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly and Councilmember Alsop. Tonight, our first item of business is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on this agenda may do so at this time. Know that your comments are limited to three minutes and need to be addressed to the council as a whole. If you'd like to come up here, state...
Is it on RV parking?
If you'd like to address, come to the podium here.
It's on the agenda later.
State your name.
It's on the agenda later.
It's on the agenda. It will be later on another event?
No.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sandra Wagner. I live in Country Club Manor. This has to do with RV parking in our subdivision.
Sandra, we have that on the agenda tonight. We'll be talking about that a little later. These are for items that's not on the agenda. So we'll be talking about this issue a little later this evening, and you'll have an opportunity to voice that at that time, okay? Anyone else on a matter that's not on the agenda? Call the public. See, nobody moved. All closed. Call the public and come back to our special events. First, we have a presentation of the state of the city. Bear with me as I go through this. We have been busy as a city, so we'll just recap last year. The start of the new year is a perfect time to reflect on what we accomplished last year and to share our plans for 2018. All city council policies and decisions are derived by four major priorities we have identified. One, to preserve and repair our infrastructure, especially roads, sewer, and water. Two, to pursue economic and community development. Three, to improve our quality of life, including better safety education and opportunities. And four, to maintain an organization with solid and stable leadership. Our major accomplishments over the past year, our financial health and outlook, and our future plans consistently support these four priorities. Our city's economic outlook continues a slow, steady upward trend. As evidenced, monthly sales tax revenues in 2017 show slight increases over 2016, with retail comprising almost 75% of total collections. We also saw increased construction activity in both the residential and community sectors. Our longstanding policy of fiscal conservatism and saving money for the future allowed us to proceed with several important projects. The most notable was renovating an existing building on the Deuce of Clubs into a new public safety headquarters that opened in the late summer. This attractive, highly visible civic addition houses our police department, Navajo County Sheriff's Office substation, and a jail annex. To meet our priority to maintain and improve existing infrastructure, we completed a number of key projects, including upsizing a major water main along the south side of the Deuce of Clubs from South 8th Avenue east to Central and replacing a water line on 16th Avenue; improving East Owens by replacing a water line; repairing a sewer line and milling and overlaying the roadway; reconstructing roads in Park Valley and Fools Hollow area; improving city-owned portions of Pinrod and Cholo Lake Roads; and rebuilding 10th Avenue west of Safeway; replacing sewer lines in the Westwood subdivision, one of the city's oldest and complete, deemed the upgrade of the sewer treatment plant by adding a building to house testing and monitoring equipment; we connected a sidewalk sections on the north and south sides of the Deuce of Clubs near the Clark Road intersection. In addition, Arizona Department of Transportation funded and managed two projects in Cholo. The first project replaced box culverts at 11th Street in Hunning and the second widened US-60 Deuce of Clubs from the SR-77 intersection east to 40th Street, with final touches to be completed this summer. In our pursuit of economic development and business growth, another council priority, we welcomed two new businesses, the UPS Store and Cholo Storage. Summit Healthcare Regional Medical Center did more remodeling of existing facilities and late last year broke ground north of the hospital for a major expansion project that will result in new medical offices, an ambulatory surgery center, and an administrative services building. In multi-family housing, we saw two seven-plex apartment buildings built on 4th Drive. Boutique Air, the commuter airline, continues to be successful maintaining a daily flight schedule between Cholo and Phoenix with consistently high passenger use and satisfaction. To improve our quality of life, another priority, our city employees dedicated themselves to providing a variety of events, including sports leagues, kids and family-friendly events, holiday happenings, music and entertainment in our parks, library, and aquatic center. To celebrate our May 1953 incorporation, we held our annual party along with the annual barbecue throwdown competition. The increasingly popular throwdown drew master barbecue pitmasters from across the United States with savory barbecue offerings and day-long festivities. In the summer, our annual Fourth of July Parade and Freedom Fest drew spectators and participants from across the region to enjoy patriotic activities, live music, and spectacular fireworks. Our signature Cholo Shines for the holidays illuminated our city with sparkling Christmas lights and holiday spirit. We had one of the best Christmas light parades with many participants and spectators this year. At year's end, we counted down to midnight with our Deuce of Clubs drop and fireworks. In improved amenities, we expanded the parking lot at Cholo Bluff Trail and established a community fishing program at Cholo Creek in association with the game and fish. We built new restrooms at Cholo Lake Campground and created a fitness zone of outdoor exercise equipment in City Park, which was a 50/50 cost share with the manufacturer. We're proud of our heritage of bringing hope and the prospect of a better life through our community projects and holiday assistance programs. Our employees and community volunteers spent several hours making the dog park more accessible and attractive in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service, an annual service day we've held since 2009. We also supported the Fifth Annual Community Fast for Compassion, helping our community raise over $16,000 for individuals and families in need during the holidays. We thank everyone who donated their time, money, and efforts for these causes. In terms of our financial position, the council and staff are committed to using your taxpayer dollars wisely. Our conservative fiscal policy ensures we have the necessary funds to meet your needs and to weather economic downturns. We never spend more than we have budgeted. We also save money to pay for at least a portion of larger, more expensive projects in future years. Our department managers share that vision by carefully analyzing every program to ensure efficiency. I am proud to say our fiscal policies have allowed Cholo to survive difficult economic times and see modest growth. Our cost-conscious approach supports our pledge to deliver full policy and public work services, community events, and recreational activities to ensure your needs and interests are met. We offered our 19th Annual Free Project Clean Suite Beautification Program, co-sponsored the annual record-breaking Electronic Waste Collections Event, and provided a Christmas tree recycling site. Looking to 2018, our plans include extending the sewer main on the east side of White Mountain Road from Hidden Way to Eldriff; improving the sewer systems in the Countant Town area on McNeil and three older subdivisions in Parkview, Park Plaza, and Sierra Vista; replacing a water line in West McNeil from Fox Canyon to the Deuce of Clubs; improving the water and road systems along 8th Street to connect with Whipple and Wolford; building four outdoor pickle courts at the city campus on East McNeil. At City Park, we will install new children's playground equipment geared for different ages along Owens, improving landscaping and reconfigure the parking area west of the Little League Field, and add curbs and surface materials at the dog park. Using grant funds, we will construct new sidewalks on East McNeil between 8th and 9th Streets and replace the sidewalk on 8th Street from East McNeil to the Deuce of Clubs. We will continue to collaborate with other communities to bring added value service to our region, such as our much-needed transit system and supporting tourism marketing efforts. 2018 will bring city elections in the fall to fill three council seats and to seek voter approval for a revised general plan, which is required by state law to be presented to the voters every 10 years. The city council thanks you for your confidence in our ability to handle city affairs. A sentiment echoed by our fellow Americans, polls show that for more than a decade, Americans continue to trust local governments more than state governments or the federal government. Because the council and our city staff are dedicated to remain accessible to you, we welcome your feedback. We are responsive and transparent, and we work together as a group in a nonpartisan way. We believe in retaining local control over the city's budget, which must be balanced according to state law. To protect you and our city's assets, we voluntarily impose two permanent mandates to maintain at least a minimum of $1 million in reserves and to require a supermajority vote of the sitting council to approve any tax increase. We attribute much of our success to the able assistance of our city employees and volunteers who deliver their best to serve you. Our advisory committees, senior patrol, and library friends are all provided their service for free, saving taxpayers' dollars. We invite you to join us. Come volunteer your time, your talents, or materials to better our community. Join us on May 12th for Martin Luther Day King Day of Service Project, or participate in our civic process with the council as we discuss the budget next year. Every budget meeting held here in the council chambers is open to the public. We begin the process in January with the Town Hall-style meeting designed specially for citizens' input this Thursday, the 18th, at 6:00 p.m. We'll hold another budget town hall for public input on Thursday, April 5th. The entire budget calendar is posted on our website. The political and social landscape in the United States through much of this year has had great change, but let not that deter us from supporting each other, focusing on the positive and enriching the world as we embark on the new year. Let us leave behind a legacy of a better city for tomorrow and for generations. We wish you and your family the best of health, peace, and happiness in 2018. I'd like to say thanks to all of our citizens. Thank you for all you do to make our community a great place to live. May God continue to bless us and prosper our community in 2018. Thank you. Our next item, give me just a minute, I timed out here. Next item we have is a presentation regarding the Prescribed Burning and Fuel Mitigation and Firewise program. Happy to have Steve Best and Gene Bodwin with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for having me over. Tried to keep it short. Ann told me I had 10 minutes, so what I wanted to...
I went a little over.
Oh, well. Just pull the yank and tell me when to shut up. I don't want to start too batched in the history, but we were just talking about the advantages and benefits of prescribed burning. And I'm sure everybody here has a really good history lesson and know about the natural... Fire was the natural phenomenon that controlled and managed and maintained these forests here historically before Europeans came. And the way it typically worked, you get a natural lightning strike fire. It was a low-intensity, for the most part, fire that just kind of burned across the landscape, and it maintained things in a situation where you just had these low fires that didn't really do a lot of damage, but they kept things in check. Once the Europeans came, they sort of changed that ecosystem to where those frequent low-intensity fires stopped happening. Then also, they've prevented fires. And so then we got a situation where the forest grew thicker, denser. Historically, I know it depends on the areas. We have some areas here that are a little denser than, say, the Kaibab, but they have fairly low tree densities, 10 to 50, 100 trees to the acre, and now we have thousands of trees to the acre because of the lack of fire. So as you all know, we use timber sales, veggie treatments to control the number of trees per acre and thin that out, but we also have to use prescribed fire. And mainly, I guess the reasons are that it's a natural system, and it's natural, fire is. The other thing is economics. You know, we can't afford to do timber sales on all the areas that would need to be treated. And plus, a lot of the stuff that we can control with the prescribed fire is pre-commercial. It's not really valuable for anybody to purchase. And so for us, in order for us to maintain the forest in a condition where we don't have the big fires that we've had in the past, we're going to always need to prescribe fire and prescribe burn. We have a very, I think, scientific system for doing that. We use weather forecasts. We plan the burns on days where the relative humidity is in a situation where we can manage the fire, it won't get out of control, and that we're getting the desired effects. So we want to kill some low, small shrubby trees, brush, reduce some of those fuels, but we don't typically want to kill the overstory for the most part. So we plan those out fairly well. You know, it's like everything else. You get a weather forecast, sometimes it doesn't turn out like you plan, and so we have some mixed effects and mixed results from that. But typically, we do pretty good. On this forest, we burn somewhere between 15 and 30,000 acres a year is what we try to shoot for. Last year, we burned about 47,000 acres. Part of that was with natural ignitions. So if we get a natural fire that starts when we have the right perimeters to control the fire and we think we can control it and get some beneficial effects from it, we can manage that and let that burn under kind of a controlled situation, and we get to count those acres as well. This year, we've got a target of 35,000 acres. It's a ramped-up target. Part of that is coming from the Washington office and our new chief and trying to ramp up the scale of restoration so that we're moving a little faster than what we've been moving. One of the big issues that we have with the prescribed burning program is smoke and smoke management. I'm sure you guys get calls periodically, and I'm sure you get smoke in town periodically from our fires. My deputy said I should quit saying this, but it's kind of a necessary evil. You know, if we're going to have fire, we're going to have smoke. And the way I try to rationalize that in my own mind anyway is, for you guys that were here and endured the Radio Chedescott Fire or the Walla Fire, you know what wildfire smoke's like. It's extremely dense, long duration, lot more particulate matter in those fires than prescribed fire. So there's no way to burn without having smoke, and you're always going to have those issues, but under a managed situation, we can mitigate that as much as possible, and it's a lot lesser effects than we have a wildfire. I told the Navajo Council, Navajo County Council, that, you know, my dad has got COPD and also emphysema, and so he's very sensitive to smoke, and we're very sensitive to that. We have some residents that we're aware of that's made it clear to us that they want to know when we're going to burn, so we try to do the courtesy calls where we'll give them a heads-up, let them know when we're planning burns so that they can make arrangements to either get out of the smoke or just be prepared for it. But it's just one of those things we're going to always have to do, because even once we do these veggie treatments with the timber sales typically and treat the forest, we're going to have to maintain those somehow, or they'll just grow back up into the same situation and we'll be starting over again. And prescribed burning is fairly economical. It's a lot cheaper than doing the mechanical treatments. I think, Ed, you might help me, but I think it's about $100 to $175 an acre for us to do prescribed burns, cheaper on some of those natural ignition burns that we get. And so it's just one of the best tools that we have in the toolbox to maintain the forest. Like I said earlier, the goal is to maintain the ecosystem and as close to a natural situation as we can get it, but also to prevent that fuel buildup that's going to cause those really intense catastrophic fires. Couple of challenges that we face. One, as we talked about earlier, is the smoke. The other is with our timber management, you know, the mills and the infrastructure for removing the timber, the loggers and all that stuff is, they're struggling, and we're kind of, a lot of them are gone. And so we're really working with them hand-in-hand to try to, I don't know, get them back involved, get them back here. And so some of our bigger projects, like I'm sure you heard about the Four Frye Project, which is the Four Forest Restoration Initiative that includes the Toto, the Abar S., the Coconino, and the Kaibab. And we're trying to do these larger land-scale treatments to hopefully entice businesses to come, mills to come. And one of the big critical things that we need here that we have a lot of is biomass, which is the smaller material that's not really commercial. It's not big enough to build two-by-fours out of, and we have a lot of it. So we burn it right now. We either pile it up and burn it, or during the prescribed fires, we remove it that way. But we do have a few noble power up at Snowflake that is purchasing and taking that stuff and burning it in a Cogen, creating electricity. And more of those we have, the better it would be. But right now, that's really the only tool that we have for maintaining the forest. So with that, I could open it up for questions and see if you have anything specific.
Any questions, councilmember?
You stated earlier that you couldn't afford to cut the timber, et cetera, you know, people coming in and utilizing the timber. What did that mean?
Well, we do offer timber sales. So we sell the timber to some of the local companies here in town, and they purchase it. But some of that material is so small, it's pre-commercial. It's not really valuable. You can't cut it into a two-by-four, and that's the material that we're really dealing with on the prescribed burning and the biomass issue.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Kukavas.
You mentioned that there's a pre-burn number that people have called that you can, they can get notification prior to the burn. Can you tell us what that number is?
Well, we have a list of people that have expressed to us in the past that they were interested and wanted to know when we were burning. And the districts, when they know that fire, that burn's coming up, we go through this mailing or phone list that we've obtained over time, and we give them a call, courtesy call, to let them know we're going to burn.
So they just call the district office?
Yeah, it's usually the district's offices, and that's where people call to let them know they want to know about it. And also, there's the, what is the 311? The county has, and Gene might talk to that a little bit.
511.
511. It was close. And they give out information on the burns, because a lot of people, you know, when you're in a fire-pronged areas, you guys know better than me, when you smell or see smoke, you want to start calling people to find out what's going on. And that thing has been really helpful for everybody to find out what's going on with fires and prescribed fires and wildfires as well.
Yes, councilmember.
So the smaller stuff that you burn or sell with the biomass, do you ever open that up for recreational fire pits at your house where you can just go with your saw and after you thin the bigger stuff out there and before you burn, can we buy a permit to go in there? Or once you guys start logging in, it's done? I mean, we all have recreational fires, and we're not going to stop at Circle K and spend $8 for that.
You're talking about firewood, firewood.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's, you know, it's not for indoor use, but you, I mean, everybody has an outdoor fire, not everybody, but is that ever open up where a guy go get a truckload where instead of burning it all first, go in there and let, open it up, nobody shows up, then burn?
Well, we can issue firewood permits. You know, we sell those typically for firewood. There is some authorities where we could give away free firewood. We've done that in other places. I don't know if we have here other forests I've been on. We've done that. This stuff that I'm talking about typically is, I don't even think people would get it for firewood. It's really...
Well, that's what I was talking about, like the pine, that you're not going to burn in your house, but you're going to burn outside in your fire.
I'm not aware of us having any permits like that. I'm looking to Ed. Ed's been here for a few years.
Well, just an idea. I mean, I'm talking outdoor firewood, not indoor.
Brush pile burning or whatever.
It seems like you can always use some of it, but...
I don't think we have anything like that.
Okay.
I've never experienced anybody come to ask if they could get some brush to burn.
Well, not so much the brush, but the smaller stuff you were just talking about, you know, for your fire pit outside for, instead of buying, it'd be nice to go out there and get it all before you burn it up.
Right.
Any other questions? Any other comments of you guys tonight here, Steve or Gene or Ed?
Gene has some.
We, I do want to say that we have a lot of support for the prescribed burning program, and I'm very appreciative of that. I know, like I said, my dad has COPD, and he doesn't really appreciate it when we burn around him, but at the same time, he understands that it's just part of the process. And there's some people a lot more sensitive to fire or smoke than others, and we're aware of that, and we try to mitigate any way we can. But, you know, Ed was showing me some areas this season, this year, is going to be burned right here close to Cholo, and we're very likely going to put smoke in town, you know, and it's just, it's one of those things we try to mitigate as much as we can, but it's just, as they told me not to say, necessary evil, I think.
Well, just compensate with putting more fish in the streams, okay?
All right. That's usually not our shot, but we will support that.
Gene has something to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Gene?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me up here. My name's Gene Bodwin. I am the Northeast District Manager for Arizona's Department of Forestry and Fire Management, and I'd like to speak a little bit about preparation for this year's oncoming fire season. As councilman, Kelly had put during the invocation, the lack of moisture, and we need it. We need it real bad. With that said, we're pushing our Firewise program extremely hard this year. We will have the Third Annual Firewise Summit here on the mountain. The flyer will be coming out shortly. I will be speaking with the committee members here this next week about where and what time it'll be. So we're going to have that on the mountain in the latter part of April. Other programs besides Firewise, we have the Ready, Set, Go through Navajo County. We also have fire-adapted communities, and we want to push that out to our community members as well as our visitors up here. We have people through the fire department that are trained for Firewise to do assessments out there on individual properties. We'd love to get that outreach out to those members of the community so that they can call their local fire departments. call their local fire departments and we can go out and take a look at their homes. There's a lot of little things that homeowners seem to miss, you know, little baskets hanging on decks. Those are like a baseball bin for firebrands. Firewood stacked either close or underneath the decks. Those are another, like baseball mitts for firebrands. And it's little things like that that homeowners seem to miss. We're not out to tell them to strip their land, strip their property, clear cut. I enjoy the trees myself. I've been on the mountain since 2007 and I love it up here. I'm going to retire up here and I want to see this thing green with trees, the entire mountain. But I do want to get the information out to all our members, all our residents and visitors coming up to the mountain. And with that, with the Firewise program, our prevention programs, Ready, Set, Go, fire-adapted communities, we're going to make a real hard push through the state this year to make sure that that message goes out. And with that, we also have grants that are available for people. And I will let your grants department know which grants are available, what time of year they're available to apply for, so on and so forth. And that'll help the community members, you know, especially the ones that are strapped for money. With that said, Firewise, up until the first of this year, we had only one community on the mountain that was recognized nationally as a Firewise community. We now have four. They are all in the Pine Top area, but we do have Sierra Pines that we're going to start working on and hopefully have them become a Firewise recognized community here in the near future. But there's a lot more out there. We need that push. If you're parts of HOAs, mention that at those meetings. We'd be more than happy to come and talk to any of the POAs, HOAs, any of those community groups and get them on board and talk to their residents. So with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Questions, comments? I just think, you know, like without any moisture, if it continues, you know, that is going to be very serious this year and being Firewise, that's just, even if we have a lot of snow, being Firewise is always great. So thank you for what you guys do and putting that out, you know, get that as early as April instead of as late as April. I could say on your reading possibly there.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is hit the part-time residents up here, you know, and hopefully we can catch a lot of them.
That's true. Any other questions, comments, council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next item we have is a consent calendar. Any items that need to be polled or discussed? We have on the consent calendar, consideration of acceptance of a grant from Rural Activation and Innovation Network and authorizations of associated budget transfers and the city council minutes of the regular meeting, January 2nd, 2018. Councilmember Lee, motion to move, seconded by councilmember Alsop. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing, new business. We have a public hearing resolution R2018-02, adopting the Cholo General Plan, declaring a public record, a certain document titled 2018 Cholo General Plan and submitting the 2018 Cholo General Plan to voters. Mr. Trigaskis.
Mr. Mayor and Council. In October of 2007, the city council adopted resolution number 2000R2007-49, which adopted the current version of the Cholo General Plan. This plan was approved by the voters in March of 2008. The state's Growing Smarter and Growing Smarter Plus legislation mandates that all general plans must be updated every 10 years and presented to the voters for approval. The recommendation is to present the new 2018 General Plan to the voters in the next regularly scheduled election on August 28th of 2018. The existing 2008 General Plan was developed with help from a 14 citizen general plan advisory committee. In response to rapid growth and growth patterns, the committee was charged with assisting and drafting a completely new 2008 General Plan. This new plan was created following committee meetings, community surveys, public open houses, technical advisory committee input, and staff assistance before it was approved by the voters in 2008. As required by state law, cities and towns must adopt new plans or re-adopt existing plans every 10 years. Staff presented the proposal to update the existing 2008 General Plan rather than completely rewriting a new plan to both the commission and council in study sessions. Based on the local economy over the last 10 years and the subsequent lack of development, the consensus was that the previous projections were still valid. This update includes new demographic data and revised maps within the existing document to reflect current city limits and conditions. A review draft of the 2018 General Plan was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the mandatory 60-day review period. Following this presentation, staff distributed the proposed 2018 General Plan to various agencies for the required 60 days. No comments were received. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing for comments related to the 2018 General Plan at its regular meeting of January 9th, 2018. No public input was received. Following the public hearing, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the 2018 General Plan to the city council. Do have a few items here just to kind of go through to discuss what is a general plan. A general plan is utilized as a basis or guidance for land use decisions, provides demographic information, provides for future land use projections, is utilized for capital improvement plans such as roads and trails, and provides requirements for developers. As an example, if we show a road on the general plan in an area that's currently undeveloped and a developer comes in and wishes to develop that part of, piece of property, we then can point to the general plan and that road as a requirement of that development. The question would be, why do we have to update this? We have the state statute that requires that it be done every 10 years. We know that this was done in 2008, but it also allows us and provides us an opportunity to update the information that's contained in the plan. And that's important because as we apply for grants and other types of things, as we look through the CIP plan, we then can use this updated general plan as a tool. For example, if we're applying for a grant to put a bridge down by Cholo Lake, we can point to the general plan as a document that supports that application. We look to update the demographic data. For example, our population in 2006 was estimated at 10,555. Our 2016 estimate is 11,176. We look to update the new city limits and total area. In 2008, our city limits was 40 square miles. It's now 65 square miles. We look to update our general information. As an example, average daily water use in 2006 was a little over 1.1 million gallons per day. Currently, we're pushing 1.6 million gallons per day in 2016. And then we need to update so that we're in compliance with state law. We also want to update some of our property, the projections for what's going to happen with the property. As an example, in our current general plan, we show the county property out on Penrod Road as a governmental use. The county has indicated that that may change in the future and so we have revised our general plan map to reflect that possibility. So rather than a government use, it may be a commercial use in the future. So moving forward, what would happen following approval by the council would be taken to the voters for approval. That would happen in August of 2018 at the next regularly scheduled municipal election. So with that, staff is available for questions. This has been scheduled for a public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Kelly?
I would like to spin off of your example of a undeveloped piece of property, developer comes in and wishes to do something with that and we show a traffic flow would require a road in a certain location. And so we would probably say to that developer, well, we need this road built through here. Provided however, good engineering would indicate that the road could be built off of that site and still meet all traffic flow requirements by good engineering. Is it true that the general plan would force that road to be built just where we put it on the general plan or might it be moved?
As you can see on the slide in front of you, we show kind of the developed area of town and then you can see the areas that are not developed. And you can see that we've kind of indicated potential roads and trails and things like that through those undeveloped areas with just a dashed line. That would indicate that there is flexibility in the location of that. Obviously, things, topography would play a large role into the location of those roles. So certainly there's some flexibility that's meant to be included with that.
I thank you. That was my understanding of how this works and I just wanted the public to get that perspective and hear it from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I'm going to, thank you at this time. I'm going to open this up to a public hearing. Any citizen desiring to speak on this item here of our general plan may do so. See, nobody moved. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for any other questions or a motion. Councilmember Alsop.
I move adopt resolution number R2018-02, adopting the 2018 Cholo General Plan, declaring as a public record, a certain document filed with the city clerk titled 2018 Cholo General Plan, submitted to the 2018 Cholo General Plan to the voters for the city of Cholo.
Any other motions, seconded by councilmember Kelly? Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is consideration of ordinance number 2018-02, amending section 13-3-4, blocking traffic of chapter 13, traffic of the Cholo City Code. Mr. Trigaskis.
Thank you once again, Mayor and Council. At the October 5th, 2017 council retreat, staff presented information to the council related to the occupancy of motorhomes, recreational vehicles or RVs, campers, and similar type vehicles on city streets. This information was presented in response to a citizen complaint about a neighbor occupying an RV parked on the city street for several days. Following this discussion, staff reviewed existing city code regarding parking on city streets and occupancy of RVs and similar type vehicles. While there is no section in city code that specifically addresses occupying RVs on a city street, section 13-3-4A, blocking traffic prohibits parking any vehicle on a city street where the parking of such vehicle results in less than 20 feet in width of the remaining roadway for the movement of vehicle traffic. Additionally, section 15-1-44L states campers, motorhomes, and travel trailers in conjunction with a residence may be inhabited for no more than 14 consecutive days and no more than 30 days in one calendar year. This section does not specifically deal with the situation of an RV or similar type vehicle being occupied while located on a city street. In response to these findings, staff is recommending that section 13-3-4, blocking traffic, be amended to add subsection C. This addition would prohibit occupying a motorhome, recreational vehicle, camper, or similar type vehicle located either fully or partially on a paved street or sidewalk. Parking these vehicles in the right-of-way would not be affected provided the vehicle is not occupied and the remaining sections of 13-3-4 are in compliance. Parking in areas signed no parking is always prohibited. Parking occupied vehicles in the right-of-way also would not be affected provided they are not parked on a sidewalk or the paved portion of the street. The proposed changes are shown in ordinance number 2018-02 as bolded and underlined and I am available for questions.
Any questions, comments of council? Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, I got a question for you. If this thing goes, let's take this big picture. If I have an RV and I hook onto my truck and I take the RV around the block and I park in front of my house and I go grab my boat and I go put it on the back of my RV and I go inside to pick up some stuff and I leave, is there going to be a time limit where you can have an RV or something, if you're hooking it up to go do camping or go recreate compared to understanding of living out there on the dang road? I understand the two concepts, but I don't want people to think that if you pull an RV out and you're getting it ready, that you can get a ticket for having to block in something.
The proposal that is before the council this evening deals only with RVs that are being occupied and the public street. So a vehicle that is not occupied, scenario that was presented just by Councilman Alsop, would not be affected by the provisions as before the council. However, provision A of 1334 says you cannot block a street and leave less than 20 feet of pavement width there. So in that particular scenario, technically, theoretically, possibly, yes, you could be in violation of existing city code if you were blocking more than 20 foot of the pavement width. But the things that you're discussing tonight, because the RV's not occupied, would not be affected by what is before the council at this time.
So to answer that, just a little bit more then, if we as a city have a road that is not up to the major width and I have a eight-foot wide RV and I pull it off into a ditch or whatever, as long as people can pass you, then you're going to be pretty much okay unless you come out there with a yardstick and measure the dang road to find out what, you know, if I'm a half inch too far out or a half inch too far in.
Correct. The 20 foot's the magic number, but I think there's a little bit of understanding with our police officers and who enforce that regarding being practical.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Kukavas.
Justin, you talked about the occupancy of these vehicles. What about, how long can a RV or a vehicle stay parked on a right-of-way area unoccupied? Is there a time limit? Is, you know, is it a parking space forever for a vehicle?
Currently, under city code, if a street is not signed no parking and the vehicle does not appear to be abandoned, my understanding is there's really no restrictions, requirements that that vehicle be moved after a certain number of days or a certain number of hours.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kelly?
An observation, I believe this is the topic the lady would like to address.
Yes, it is.
I'm sure you didn't miss that, but forgive me.
Just going through a council first, so.
Well.
At this time, if you'd like to come and present what you'd like to, we're open to that and then we'll continue to discuss. Just please state your name and where you live for the record, please.
Andrew Wagner and I live in country called Manor. My address is 1400 North 40th Drive in Cholo. I do have some questions. Last week or so, I had a meeting with some other neighbors with Ed Muter and we were discussing these RV situations. One of the situations I had last summer, my neighbor across the street had someone just visiting, but they were blocking traffic where you had to stop if the oncoming car was coming towards you. And I remeasured our street today and it's 24 inches, I mean, 24 feet wide. This RV in particular was at least 12 foot width, so therefore they were blocking the street where you couldn't, both traffic could not go through. Again, it only lasted for about four days, but more and more people are having RVs and campers and everything else, boats, et cetera. And at times they do block the streets. So, you know, I'm kind of against anything on that. So, you know, I, I'm kind of against anything on our streets. I'm also against RV parking in the front yards, which is another issue. I understand that, but it's the issue with us. And during our meeting last week with Mr. Muter, now, this evening, are you voting on this particular item, section thirteen three four?
It's on.
This evening?
It is proposed for a motion tonight, yes.
Okay. So, at this time, you don't know if you're going to go to A, B, or C?
The only, what do you mean by A, B, or C?
Okay. So, A is, it is unlawful for any person to stop, stand or park any motor vehicle or another vehicle upon a street in the city in such a manner or under such conditions as to leave available less than 20 feet width of the highway for free movement of vehicle traffic, except that a person may stop temporarily in the actual loading and unloading of passengers or when necessary in observance of traffic signs or signals of the police superintendent.
That's our current law now. The only thing that we're looking at changing tonight would be item C, which it is unlawful for any person to occupy a motorhome, recreational vehicle camper while it's on a paved street or sidewalk.
Okay.
So, what A and B is currently part of our ordinance that we have is we would just be amending that by adding number C.
Number C, okay. I just want that clarified. Any other questions from anyone? Okay, thank you.
You know, part of it is also what we do here is we're also mindful of the entire city, you know, so we have to be mindful of everybody as well and we, we are aware of your situation and, and this hopefully will keep people from living while they're parking in violation as well.
I have to add one thing. Sorry. We still have that motorhome in the cul-de-sac. He goes from the cul-de-sac to driveway, cul-de-sac driveway. It's been there since last May and this is the issue he has. I mean, granted, it's in cul-de-sac, it's not in the main high street that we're on. However, it's still monkey see, monkey do. He does it, I can do it. And that's a situation there and it's very difficult at times. Anyway, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, councilwoman Kukavas.
I am concerned with the, the timeframe that we're allowing vehicles to park on the street. You know, I understand, you know, for instance, in a cul-de-sac, if you're going to park there for a temporary period, but I wouldn't consider, you know, seven months a temporary period for parking a vehicle in the city right-of-way. There's also vehicles over in some of the subdivisions that have been there for a year or longer, sometimes many years, that impedes their neighbors' use of that road. And so, I would like us to consider revising that a little bit to limit the time that people can park on the right-of-way.
I would have to agree. Part of it, we see, we have several streets that maybe a dead end goes there, so that becomes that neighbors, he thinks that's become part of an extension of his property and he uses that for his particular parking. There comes a, a time though where we probably need to address, you know, I can see going forward with what we have, adding this one, but maybe this isn't the end of improving this if possible. Councilmember Leach.
By passing this, this also gives us, law enforcement can go out there. So, like their situation, instead of calling the city hall, this passage, you need to call the police stations and, and let us know because, of course, they're not everywhere either. So, once this is passed, instead of calling city hall, say, hey, that guy's over there with the motorhome, call the police station because now he's in violation of this order. So, it's, now they can go over there and cite the guy or have it towed. So, instead of calling city hall, it gives you the right, they can enforce it now.
Any other passes? Sorry. Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, I believe we all probably saw a need to correct a situation that existed and this is an effort to take it in that direction. Is this the be-all, the end-all? No. And it may need to be made even more restrictive. If you've known me very long, you probably know I want to make it as least restrictive as possible and not have one person offending or making others have a lesser use of their property. In other words, abusing the system. So, I know it's been put forth in discussion at least in the past by a council member that all RVs and all trailers, boat trailers and everything else be parked off residential properties and streets. You know, make commercial lots where you can park these things, get them out of, get them out of town, get them out of their residential areas. Well, that's carrying it too far as far as I am concerned, for sure. But if somebody's blocking a roadway or you simply can't get through, I think we'd get close to 100%, although not 100% of the citizenry saying, you don't have a right to do that to me. I don't have a right to do that to you. RVs, other than if it's on a curve and they happen to be quite long, I, I wished I knew the law. I believe it's eight and a half feet wide is a vehicle. I bet somebody in here knows that. And that could be a pickup with a camper, it could be a duly pickup truck or something. It's the same width as a motorhome, but where you're on a curve, the long motorhome affects a wider section of the street. So, we had some streets in town that aren't paved very wide and if you parked on them at all, you'd probably leave less than, less than 20 feet unless you were parking a motorcycle, maybe. So, you know, I, I think it's a good faith effort at correcting the problem we had in the past and certainly a good faith effort at preventing the abuse of creating city right-aways as recreational vehicle parking for the sake of living in them. And that's wasn't the intent by anybody, I don't believe. So, that's been, had that loophole plugged, if you will. I would like to see us go forward with what we got in front of us and if situation develops that it isn't enough, then we crank in some more regulations, but let's don't jump off the deep end, is what I'm trying to say.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, mayor. I don't, I, Justin, I don't know if you can answer this question or not. Blocking a road is, to me, and maybe I'm wrong, blocking a road is blocking a road where no traffic can go in and out. Having a, a vehicle or a trailer hooked on, getting ready to move in, in 20 minutes or a half hour and only, and you have one lane of traffic where one person has to stop and go through and, and you have to take your time, that's, to me, that's not blocking the road. That's restricting the road for, for the flow of traffic, but does it come into this, to this wording here that if, if I pull an RV up there and I'm loading thing up and people's got it one at a time, one direction, is that blocking the traffic or is that restricting?
Based on current city code, anything that, that results in less than 20-foot of pavement width would be defined as blocking the road, even though, as you're saying, there's still the ability for people to get through. It's not a two-lane traffic. You are, in actuality, restricting, but by our code, less than 20-foot would result in a violation of city code.
You know, because what I don't want to see and I'm, and I'm with Gene is, say somebody has a trailer and they're pulling it up and they're going to try to back it into their yard so they can haul off a bunch of brush and it's a long trailer and it's a big trailer and they try to back it up and two or three cars come down the road and they can't get through, they call the police officer and come and tell that guy he's going to get a ticket because he blocked traffic for five minutes.
Right. That's right. But I think, you know, councilmember Alsop, that is the current law that we have. We're not to just change that and that's what we currently have. And I don't think any, very few people have been cited in this community for.
But no, I just, you know, I, I just understand the lady's thing about blocking. So, I just want to make sure what blocking the road is.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if you can't get out and you, and if you're a citizen and you want to call and say that my street out front is blocked, you have that right and we have an ordinance to help protect those people. But what we're talking about tonight is adding just that it's unlawful to occupy a motorhome, camper, similar vehicle located either fully or partially on a paved road. So, that would include a cul-de-sac or anything like that if they're living in it.
Correct.
Occupying it there. So, that's the portion with us tonight.
I'll just try to say hurriedly, I believe that most of us driving down the road in a full-size vehicle and we come to a 20, 20-foot roadway left open are not going to just go ahead and meet oncoming traffic. We're going to, we're going to let that oncoming traffic pass and then we're going to make our move. If you did the math, I'm thinking you got well less than a foot on each side and who wants to trust the other driver for that kind of thing? So, common sense tells me you're going to stop and let me by if it's your side that's blocked or vice versa. And that we see happen on a regular basis. Councilmember Alsop makes a good point of people like to pull their motorhome up to load groceries and gear when they're going to just go up on Greenspeak for a while. And some people don't have enough room to get that unit completely off of the road while they do that, but they're probably not going to be more than 30 minutes in having that happen. They're not going to cause anybody any more inconvenience rather than just wait for that one car to meet and go past. And so, I, I think it could be straining at a gnat and swallowing a camel if we're not careful. And that's all I want to say.
It might be kind of ghost of that, you can load and unload, just, you know, be free, but I think, you know, councilmember Alsop, the definition, you have to make it somehow and the best way they could, was 20 feet. It could have been 19, it could have been, nobody's going to be out of the tape measure, but.
Twenty point two six five. Maybe in Scottsdale, but not here.
Yeah, on that side of it. Okay. I'll look for a motion on this item.
Do you want to read by unanimous?
Oh, we need you to read ordinance, sorry. And by title only. Thank you, Ann. She'll do that first, please.
Thank you, mayor. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, amending section thirteen three four, blocking traffic of chapter thirteen, traffic of the Cholo City Code.
I'll bring it back now for a motion to adopt ordinance 2018 O two. Councilmember Kelly, main motion or a second? Seconded by vice mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you for being here tonight. We are making steps forward and I just hope that you can continue to, you know, we can work with your situation over there as well. Okay? Thank you. Next item we have is item eight D, which is consideration of essential air service proposals. Mr. Cupp.
Thank you, mayor and council. Every two years, the U.S. Department of Transportation, DOT, solicits proposals from interested airlines to provide essential air service, EAS, for the Cholo Regional Airport. The latest round of proposals was submitted to DOT on Monday, December 11th, 2017. Four airlines submitted proposals to DOT. Boutique Air, Great Lakes Aviation LTD, Tropic Ocean Airways LLC and Precision Aeromedical Transport LLC, DBA Sunrise Air. The Department of Transportation allows the whole city to provide input regarding its preferences as part of the selection process. The final selection, however, is solely a DOT decision, but takes local recommendations into consideration. Although not a requirement of the selection project, process, the city may opt to perform interviews with the, with the proposing airlines. The deadline for any recommendation from the city is February 12th. And just as a recommendation, not really a, a staff recommendation, but some options that you have might include a recommendation based on proposals or performance alone or live interviews with all or some of the proposers. And mayor and council, I will turn the discussion over to you and myself and our airport manager are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Put the council for any comments, questions? Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, mayor. I, I guess I need to go with Morgan on this one. I did receive through my email, a thing from, an email from Prescribed Aeromed Transport LLC and I went in and deleted it. I didn't even read it. So, I don't know, do we have to let you know that we received something like that or what do we have to do?
So, the council, you know, norms and procedures say that if you do receive contact from an outside person, you just disclose it to the council. That's all you need to do.
I think we all do.
I also received an email and I've also had some discussion with the representative of, of Sunrise Air.
You didn't? He doesn't like you. I just want to make sure that we didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah, so basically, so everyone has the same information when you're voting. If it went to everybody, then, then you all have it.
Well, I think just because we've done it in the past, I think we should schedule time to meet with all of them. I mean, that's the way we've done it in the past where they're, I think we even recommended someone else and they went with someone else last time, didn't they, or something? Or maybe that was a few years ago. Anyway, I think we should, if the council wants to, obviously, I don't want, I don't like more meetings than we already have, but show up at six and be done by seven, I'm sure with four of them before one meeting would be great for me. Not sure how everybody else feels, but I'd like to see them all.
Any other comments, input? Councilmember Alsop.
Well, have we had any complaints from Boutique Air here lately since they redid all their, didn't they refile? Is it what they did a couple of years ago or last year?
They did. You know, Boutique was a newer company. I mean, we weren't their first airport, but they had some growing pains, I think, you know, as far as the feedback that we've received, there's a couple of things that are notable. One of those is that we are meeting our employment numbers, which allows us to stay in the program, which was in jeopardy at one point in time. The other thing is they've been purchasing a lot of fuel here at Cholo and that's made a tremendous impact on our revenues up there too. And that's one of the things that they committed to do for us.
You know, and I, I thought that's exactly why we went with them because of, well, I see Great Lakes is back on here again, but you know, it just, it was such a big turnaround. I mean, Boutique Air pulled us out of some disaster there and like you said, they're really starting to help us with the, with the fuel and also with the, all the customers they have up here in, in the White Mountains. So, I, I understand, you know, I like to listen to, hear and see what everybody else has to offer, but I think Boutique Air really pulled us out of some type of bind in the last three or four years, so.
I'll just share, basically, we got the four packets, okay? And looking at the four packets of who we have between the four, we also have to look, that was submitted to Department of Transportation, DOT. Their proposal is not going to change what has been submitted to them. And so, I will say that the first two on here, Boutique and Great Lakes, put a really good prospectus together. And so, if we were to recommend one of those two, it kind of supports what they have done. Although we have a local person and a new person here, their one-page application, it doesn't give a whole lot of information. Department of Transportation is going to say, why are they recommending these people off of a piece of paper proposal? It doesn't make us look as good as if they had a really good proposal, the same and equal. Interest of time, if we all want to parade them back through here, we can, but I look at it as similar to, we have had a good service with Boutique. I don't know why we'd want to go back with Great Lakes, given the two, if there was a reason that we needed to, it's great to know that they're here and maybe it's just hospitality, but other than that, you know, I don't have a problem either way, either interviewing or not interviewing people. Councilmember Kelly.
Are you kind of saying if it ain't broke, don't fix it?
Kind of. Kind of say, I mean, I mean, it, it's good and, you know, like I say, it's just a recommendation. We don't make the final selection. If we were making the final selection, by all means, I'd want to see all of them, but eight, Department of Transportation doesn't even do that. They just go off of what was submitted to them.
And I have a question. Do we have knowledge of a significant area of service or performance that Boutique promised that they did not comply with? Where they failed to do what they told us they were going to do?
Yeah. Mayor and council, I don't think there's any place where. Mayor and Council, I don't think there's any place where, where they have been remiss in what they promised. One of the things, staff did have a conversation with Boutique as well, a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that we mentioned was the amount of the dollars for marketing that they, they said was available to Cholo. And I think it was, it was significantly more than what Great Lakes had, had committed to. And we asked them, well, we haven't necessarily seen that much money spent in the community, and their response was, send us some events, ask us, you know, they're, they're willing to listen to, to, to our needs, and they're certainly willing to live up to that commitment for marketing and, and supporting. I do believe they, they did sponsor a Little League team, or had some support in Cholo Little League. So, they're available, and they just said, all you have to do is ask, and, and they'll respond. So, that's the only, probably the only segment that, that they could have been remiss in, but I think it was just us not necessarily pursuing those dollars.
I think in the proposal, they showed somewhere around $20,000 they've sent on marketing or something here in this area locally. And then you have your fuel cells and, and things as well. They've done.
The only other thing that I might add, and of course, these are all airlines, and so, you know, they have an airplane, they can get here, but it is a tremendous, a significant expense to these folks to, to show up here, and I'm certainly not going to, going to make a recommendation, but that's something else to keep in mind. I mean, it's just like, we all have automobiles, but it still costs money to travel somewhere and, and visit somebody, so.
We can either interview everybody, or we can make a motion to possibly recommend one of these four. I guess this were.
You know, Mayor, I just, I think we, well, Boutique pulled us out of a big bind, and after even going to DC and talking over there, I don't think, if it wasn't for Boutique Air, I think we would have lost this a long time ago. And I think they helped us out a lot. If they were goofing up, and if they was not promising people, and they had cancellations after cancellations, like Great Lakes did before, and it was just a nightmare, I would say, let's interview all for them, and we'd go with somebody else. But my thought is, right now, Boutique Air is supplying the needs of not only Cholo, but all the White Mountains up here, and doing a good job with it. And I'd just like to go with that, if we, if we can do that.
That'd be a recommendation, and like I say, it's a recommendation, and the final I'll say is still in Department of Transportation. We're willing to work with any of these four. So, can you live with that?
Is that a motion?
No, I'm just, it was a recommendation.
You know, I think, what we went through with, with Great Lakes.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I'll start talking over you. Well, go ahead and finish, and then come back, and I'll make a motion then. What we went through before we selected Boutique, or we were giving Boutique service, I've, I've seen a turnaround in the ridership, the attitude of the people that travel and use the airlines. I think that, from that standpoint, Boutique has my vote of confidence with regard to changing.
Great Lakes was very good. They bailed the city out at a time when, when we were in trouble. Great Lakes bailed us out. We used them. Then Great Lakes had some trouble, we used them again, and then we gave Great Lakes a chance to, even when things were bad, we gave them one last chance, and then that's when we basically had to do something to try to save our EAS, and that's where Boutique definitely performed, and continued on their renewal. Probably better this year than they did their first two years. Councilwoman Kukavas.
I've actually heard a number of personal stories with people that I work with, where Boutique will call them and say, are you on your way? Or they check on them and make sure that they're going to be able to meet their flight, because they fly it as a commuter service for, for work. And so, the services really increased, the customer service has increased exponentially.
I spoke over Mike.
Councilmember Alsop.
I'm going to make a proposal that we send the name of Boutique Air to essential air service to, to hopefully adopt them, to keep along with their air service here in Cholo, Arizona.
You have a motion? This is your second? Second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass, six to one. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cupp. Next item we have tonight is current events. Any council member wishing to share anything on current events may do so at this time. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. I just attended a couple of board meetings this last couple of weeks. One was in Cholo Main Street. We had our end of the year, however, how we did, and where we turned up, and it, we did a great job. I had to hold it to the Main Street for the farmer's market and Art Walk. They did an excellent job this last year, and just to let you know, they've already started selling spaces for next year. They've got 92 spaces, and out of 92, they only got 23 left right now. And so, it's going fast. And that will open up May 26 through September 29 this year. And so, if you're interested and you'd like to have a space, go ahead and call Diane North at North Star at 928-532-2680, and you get your name in one of those spots. The other thing was that we talked about was the way, way signs, wayfinder signs. They're in the final processes of getting powder coated and getting painted, and then we had to get them up here, and then get them, thing mounted, and, and so you guys know what goes down what road and everything else. But this has been a two-year process for Main Street, and so we're looking at a, finishing up that project this year, and having the new wayfinder signs looking just like our lights that we have right now down Main Street. So, the other thing is, I went to, wayfinder sign? Wayfinders. Like, like.
Domino's pizzas down this road.
Oh, I thought you said wait. That accent, I guess. Wait. Okay, so anyway, the, the other one was, been attending Meals on Wheels board meetings. We've been having them, instead of once a month, we've been having them every, once a week, mostly because now that we are with NACOG and changing up menus, changing up personnel stuff, looking at new ways that we're going to do food, and just to be a great service, not only to the seniors of Cholo, but also to everybody in Cholo, and make it a place where you can, you can go eat and have a good time, and, and the food will be really good. And I'm not saying it's bad right now, but it's just going to be a little bit better. We're going to try different menus and change things up. But I think everybody has seen the new car driving around town has the Meals on Wheels national logo on it and everything else. I want to put a thank you out to Subaru. Subaru went nationally to, to give different Meals on Wheels throughout the whole United States a vehicle, so they could use, decal it out the way that they wanted it, and Cholo was lucky enough to get one that was in the newspaper. And so, I want to put a thank you out to Subaru. I also want to put for Horn Chevole, for doing the decals and getting everything set up. I believe it was Vintage Sideworks that did the wrap on it. I might be wrong, but I'm thinking that's who it was. So, I want to thank them for doing the wrap. We are getting the, the Cholo phone number put on for the Meals on Wheels. We're getting some, our Cholo webpage put on there, so that you can, you can go and look at the meals and stuff like that. But this is a national thing that was put out by Subaru, and I definitely want to thank them, and I think it's an answer to a lot of different things, or the fleet that we have right now is, is getting run down, and at least we know that for a while, we won't have to do any maintenance on it. So, I want to thank everybody that had a hand in, in giving us that new automobile. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other reports of council members? Just want to note, some council members and the city manager, city attorney, Vice Mayor, myself will be going down to Legislative Day tomorrow, meet with our state legislators at, at the Capitol, and be able to give them some input. There are some real crazy proposals of some laws and things that are on the books by our state legislative people, and hopefully, we can still continue to keep local control and the things that they want to take away from us currently here. So, turn the time to city manager.
Just a few events to notify the public and council about. The Recreation Department's selling tickets for, for $6 each for the Daddy Daughter Valentine's Dance on Friday, February 2, for ages, girls ages 1 through 14 at the city campus gym. Staff's also selling tickets for $20 for a concert by The Piano Man on Friday, February 9, at 7:30 PM at the Cholo School District Auditorium. The Piano Man performs the music of Billy Joel and Elton John. And also, the Recreation Staff's also accepting registrations for the sixth annual barbecue throwdown on Saturday, May 5. And more information on those events and others the Parks and Recreation Department may have, you can reach them at 532-4140. As was mentioned earlier tonight, and in the mayor's state of the city, we're starting our fiscal year 2019 budget process, and there'll be a town hall-style meeting specifically for citizen input this Thursday, January 18, at 6:00 PM here at the city council chambers. And finally, we want to, we express our condolences to the family of Bill Thomas, who passed away last week. He served on the city council from 2002 to 2006. He's an active member of the community, participated in many different organizations. He served at the museum, senior center, and as I mentioned, he was a city council member. So, our condolences go out to his family.
Any other scheduling of meetings or any other items? See no other business, so I'll close this meeting.